Okay, council members. I'd like to start the legislation to be discussed in our pre-meeting conference dated, City of Utica, common councils, dated October 9th, 2022. And we're starting just about six o'clock, right on time. Our first piece of legislation is appointment for the Ward of Board. The Ward of Board legislation is for a reappointment, is for Mark Ford. He resides at 1600 Parkway East. I'm pretty sure he served on that board for a while. Is there any discussion on this legislation?
Can we go full council on that, Mr. Maola?
Clerk, is everybody good with that? Anybody opposed? Okay, Clerk, can you put every council member's name for sponsorship? Thank you very much. Our next piece of legislation is a board and E and A reaffirmment. It was because of the law, it was over $15,000 a transfer. Is there anybody here that could give us? Our budget director's not here. Mr. President, would you give us a quick summary on it?
That's pretty simple. We are, well, we're under budgeted for fuel costs. So transfers been pulled out of contingency. During the budget season, when this budget was put together, it was actually discussed amongst the board that part of the reason the budget director was putting certain monies aside was for actual issues with gas and oil. So this was kind of, unfortunately, we were waiting for this to happen.
It was coming. We knew it was coming.
We did ask if there was other places it could come from, but the budget director felt this was the best place.
Are there any questions on this transfer? This is an ordinance and it needs unanimous. Everybody good? Okay.
I will say that while we're putting together the next budget, we should pay attention to these lines.
Absolutely.
Take this as a note.
Well, she usually does three-year actuals, so we're hoping.
Yeah, exactly.
Our next piece of legislation, council members, is ordinance number three, sponsored by Councilwoman Katie Aiello, intersection where stops are required. Councilwoman Aiello, would you like to give us a summary on this legislation?
Yes, I'll just pull it up. This is on, I had a constituent on Mason Street ask for a stop sign because there actually wasn't one posted at the end of the road. So traffic went through and confirmed, yes, we do need one. That's really all that this part will entail. It's a one-way street from Mason onto Albany.
Any questions on this legislation? Okay, let's move to the next piece. Okay, this is another piece of legislation sponsored by Councilwoman Aiello, one-way streets, Mason northbound, south to Albany. Would you like to give us a summary on that?
Yeah, same story with this one. We just need the street to say actually one-way.
Very good. Any questions on this legislation? Discussion's closed. Let's move to the next piece. There was a typo, so everybody has the final draft for this legislation. It does require the Thursday rule. Do we have support to waive the Thursday rule for this piece of legislation? Okay. Katie, you're responsible for this legislation. Would you give us, your colleagues, a summary on it?
Sure. So the council implemented the complete streets policy in 2016. And from that, we actually finally were able to just repave the roads on Genesee Street. And because they have to be painted this Saturday, I was pushing for the request of a 90-day trial to implement those complete streets from, it would be from a Riscany Street to Cottage Place. And I have a little drawing of everybody at what was first presented. So I went down also, there were concerns, I think, back in the day of complete street, and what does that mean, especially for business owners? And part of that conversation, I let business owners know that this would be the 90-day trial, but a lot of concern stemmed from when this was first originally proposed, that a median would be in place and also in the way for business operations and whatnot. So if you hear anybody say that, let them know immediately that this request is no median involved at all. This would turn into basically from four lanes to three. They would be extra wide set lanes with turning lanes involved in the middle. So think more instead of two, more like one and a half. The other concern business owners had is that we get deliveries all the time. So delivery drivers end up double parking. And since that would still be a part of this, what you'd actually see in the middle of the turning lanes is a delivery zone. So accommodating those two issues and then pairing this with a 90-day trial, I wanted to present it to everybody and see if we can finally implement complete streets after all this time, so.
Very good. Mike Mahoney, are we okay to have the streets painted, I guess, this weekend because it's coming pretty close?
Obviously.
The weather, of course.
Yeah.
But we're okay with it?
If you get a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't think we should do this trial right now with the winter months coming up. I mean, you're not going to be able to see anything anyway. I would rather wait, hold off to maybe the spring. Is there any timeframe that we have to get this done by? That we have to do something by a certain date? If not, I would like to consider that council looking at maybe in the spring, March, April, when the snow is gone, and maybe start fresh there rather than try to paint the streets now, worry about plowing. People won't be able to read, you know, the arrows and things in the road because obviously we're going to have, you know, winter and plows and all that good stuff. So that's just a suggestion. You guys can take it for what it's worth there. Thanks.
Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes. So why, I guess, Gus, I got a question of if it's a 90-day trial, why would we paint the road?
When you need to stripe the road.
Show the path.
You have to show, you have to strike the path.
Okay.
We have to keep the road safe. We have to stripe the road. It doesn't make sense to stripe it in four lanes if you're then going to have to grind off the stripes in the spring to re-stripe it as three, which is why we do the trial basis now, just to see how the traffic flows. If the traffic flows fine, then I think it would be fine with the way it flows. I will point out to you on either end of this area, you go down to one lane. You're at one lane when you get to Monson Williams to go into the circle, and you're at one lane to cross over to go to the bridge. Because the way DOT brought it down.
Right.
Your left lane turns left and your right lane goes straight or turns right at a Riscany Boulevard. So you're really just kind of trying to blend in with what DOT is.
Right. Not, to be honest with you, I just mentioned that to Katie when we were talking. I think that's horrible in that situation over there, when you've got to go from one lane to go up into North Utica if you're in the wrong lane. It's kind of confusing there.
I think the traffic would flow a lot better if everybody's in line.
Right.
You're prepared to go over the bridge.
So when you're talking about, and I did this for years delivering soda over there, actually right in front of Katie's building, so when you're telling me now, where is the delivery lane going to be? You're going to say it's going to be in the middle of the road?
It's in the middle in the hash town.
So a truck's going to stop in the middle of the road, going to fill his handcart up.
Now they park in the middle of the drive lane.
Well, they park right in front, but it's, you've got four lanes now and you can go around. So, yeah.
They park in the middle. And then they're going to have to cross, they're going to have to drive across the drive lane and the bike lane, obviously. But it's done all over the country.
Well, I'm sure it is, but I mean, I'm just saying, I know, I know that area.
Their specialty is delivery.
Well, I just told it. I mean, it's, that's not a good thing. You're coming in the middle of the road, you're going to have a handcart full of whatever you're doing, you've got one lane of traffic coming through, and you're going to cross that lane to go over and deliver by eliminating. I know they do it all over. I'm just.
They do it right on the Riscany Boulevard to drop off cars. They do it all the time. That's where they deliver the cars, the middle lane.
Yeah, and a kid got killed there.
Now, I really.
The guy from Vanous Pizza's son lost his son there, so for that reason.
All right. Are you all set, Joey?
Yeah.
Councilman Aiello.
Do you think we can pull this off during the winter months?
I think it will work fine for the traffic because that's really what we're concerned about is the traffic. So the traffic is going to, you know, we have the opportunity to go in and tell the motorists that we're changing, you know, we have a new traffic pattern ahead. We can put up the signage, stripe it as such, and we can pull it if it doesn't work. I just, I'll have to grind off the stripes either way. If I do it in four lanes and you want to go to three lanes in the spring, I got to grind off the stripes. So if you try it out and the traffic works, you know, like I said, you've got one lane to the north and one lane to the south. So it just, it just makes sense.
Councilman Aiello, you have the floor.
I just want to add that I was, actually, the delivery zone area came to be because I was talking with probably four different delivery drivers we get daily. I ran this by them and they said this actually doesn't just work, other cities, it works right now in Oneida Square. That's where they first saw it implemented, right there in front of Popeyes. Basically, like, take that experience and send it the rest of the way down Genesee Street. So the delivery drivers enjoy that they have a designated spot. And I wanted to add, I guess there's, people think reduction of road means reduction of traffic or increase of traffic, and that's not. There's studies showing that actually the reduced lanes doesn't decrease traffic at all. That's exactly what Rochester went through. And they just implemented these. Traffic is still fine. Four lanes are designed for 15,000 to 20,000-plus cars a day. Utica, I think we see less than 10,000 cars a day right now. And one of the things I do want to say and set the conversation up for is, a lot of the traffic issues we do have is because of our traffic signal, the traffic lights aren't on a timer. So at some point, for the sake of our first responders too, and with the hospital coming in, and just because this is the right thing to do, we need to get those on the timer system and set, make sure that money is allocated for that and for the, yeah, the speed of the roads in general. But that would also be aside from the traffic part of the lanes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. President, you have the floor.
Thank you. Did you want to?
Yeah, I'll wait. You go ahead because I just, I'll get something printed out.
No, I just want a couple things. First off, we're talking about, you just mentioned starting a conversation, et cetera. We're obviously discussing this in haste. This has been proposed right now. This plan, I would like to know if a full swath of businesses were considered.
And she just stated.
I know, right. The second thing, though, is one lane, starting from Cog, is going up over by the museum. It works well. One, you know, two lanes over by the museum, Oneida Square, right, deliveries, et cetera. It works up there. We go to one lane the way DOT did that. Now, knowing that this has been proposed for the better part of 15 years now, and I've been working down on it for all those years, I've been thinking about this for a long time. And the issue with this specific area is that we do, and this, I'm not saying like there's going to be pros and cons, right? Again, this is a discussion in haste now because we're asking to vote on this now, we're looking at this right now. The density of not just businesses and buildings, but it is interesting that above Oneida Square, starting from Oneida Square, the density of businesses, the density of actual driveways in this egress is much less. If you look at how many people are coming in and out of driveways, IPT Bank, the Stanley Lot, you know, all of these lots, you go up and down, 258 Building, I could just, I could list them all. If we're going to attempt this, I really think we should consider the fact that we do have a very unique town where for four blocks, we have an extremely dense ingress and egress on our roads. And I personally sit behind delivery trucks constantly. If we go to three lanes and they're in the middle, maybe I won't be ever again. But I have to say that, you know, multiple times a week, I'm stuck behind delivery drivers with fire trucks and, I'm not trying to be alarmist here, but, and when you're, when you're debating something in haste, you bring up the cons because you want to make sure they're considered, not the pros. So I, we should be thinking about this. This was proposed right now. Council, it's up to you guys.
I should let you know, and Genesee Street is only wide enough for four lanes downtown.
Right.
Or it's four lanes uptown.
It's not.
It's not wide enough.
Well, and that's my point.
You really should consider changing that.
The last time we did a trial like this, when it was temporary, and sorry, I'm keeping the floor permit there, majority leader. It was even stated, you know, starting from the museum going all the way up to South Utica, it might make perfect sense to have a two-lane Genesee Street with bike lanes, et cetera, with all the, you know, much more residential, et cetera, where Genesee Street lends itself to that, right? Patch is a different part of, this is the metro rural part of Utica. It's a different animal. So I hope we're considering that.
I'll set, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Councilman DeBranco, then.
No, no, I didn't have a question.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I mean, it took me about two years to put this complete street policy together. And it was done to be designed that if a road was being rebuilt, a road was being repaved, that we went through a checklist in regards to this. So I made copies of the checklist. The complete streets policy does work when you design it to make it work. Like, that's the whole point. You're talking about signage, you're talking about walkability, connectivity, so on and so forth. The one thing that I guess would concern me, and I, maybe another committee meeting or something along those lines would be helpful, is fire, police, you know, putting that down to one lane in that area. I know that that was a concern that was brought up prior when we, when this was actually being discussed. If they have an emergency, where are the fire trucks going to go? So on and so forth. So I think that that's something that maybe we should take into account with, you know, having a discussion with Ingersoll and the police department, you know, to see their concerns. I mean, I don't.
The street's still as wide as it is today.
Yeah.
When an emergency truck goes down, you're supposed to pull over. The emergency truck can still go by you.
Well, right. I mean, I guess it's, it's going to be a trial on air, I guess, so to speak, in regards to it. Was this checklist completed in regards to this?
This is not my resolution.
Okay, so I guess.
However, we would go through it, yes.
I mean, this is, I mean, that's, I mean, that's all I'm saying is that we, there's, there is policies in place.
What was that?
This, I think, we passed in 2016.
Prior to the hospital. Right, that's my question.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess if we could maybe go through this checklist.
I think the hospital.
Which would be something that we wouldn't do. It would be up to the engineering department.
Sure.
You know, kind of, you know, go through their checklist and see how it works out. Again, with the discussion of police and fire and see, you know, if that's something that we could do. I mean, I know they're paving it this weekend.
His resolution is out.
Huh?
He's just painting, we're painting. It's not his resolution.
I know, but he's the engineer. I mean, that's, he's the person who designed roads and stuff like that, you know, so I guess, so to speak, just to make sure that we're following all our bases. In regards to passing that, this is why, this was, this was why it was added to that because this is what we need to be checking off to make sure that it is feasible in order for us to do it.
And we have, we have to remember it is just the trial basis here. It's not set in stone.
It's not set in stone, correct. Samantha Yosa?
You're still going to have to vote on it on my birthday.
Yeah.
Major birthday.
To something, you know, January 17th.
Oh, they'll have to come back January 17th.
Otherwise, I'm going to have to take the pain off.
I mean, I guess.
I'm going to have to take it up in January.
I guess it, it does put us in a rock and hard place too because I do agree that, you know, these things are nice because you kind of want to see how the walk, the walkability, the, the, being able to bicycle down there, how it does work in that flow of that traffic. And again, like, maybe if they did something, and obviously the paving's part of the problem, but each road that you pave, you're supposed to technically go through this checklist to see, especially when you have like North Genesee Street, Riscany Boulevard, which already has complete streets implemented into it. So that's the whole point of connecting, you know, what the state DOT did with what we were supposed to be doing. The ideal situation of what we talked about originally when we put this back together, when we put this together back with Andy Karas, was we kind of wanted to make it so that you could go from like 5S where that project was to Broad Street and then make your way back up North Genesee Street. So that was, and then, you know, again, going down Calverav, that's why we, they did the sidewalks to be able to, you know, connect from Broad Street to 5S. So that's, it was connecting all parts of the city together. And, I mean, and like I said, I just, if we can go through all these checklists and it does seem like it's feasible and the fire department, police department, everybody are on board with it, I think that that would have to be, if this resolution is passed, it would have to be contingent that everything on this checklist passes along with the approval of the police and the fire department, I think would be your best-case scenario in moving forward with the resolution.
I agree with that.
All right, Sammy Yosa?
Yeah.
Councilwoman, Celeste Fran, you have the floor.
I just, two quick things. I think it's really important to remind each other that we've actually been talking about this for six years. So the idea that we're bringing this, you know, at the last minute, it just doesn't make sense to me. We've talked about this since I've been on the council, you've talked a lot before I came on the council. And then the other thing, and I know that I've said this before, the, since the Empire Trail was finished recently by New York State, there's this enormous bicycle trail that skims right by Utica, and people will not come down into Utica because there isn't a safe way to bicycle from the Empire Trail to downtown Utica. And there's just millions and millions of economic loss there in terms of people bicycling to restaurants, hotels, et cetera. And, and I know that not everybody's very familiar with bicycle tourism, but bicycle tourism is populated by well-off, middle-class, retired boomers, money spilling out of their pockets, anxious to eat in our restaurants and stay in our hotels and go to our coffee shops and all of that. And I really worry about the economic impact of cutting ourselves off from the Empire Trail in the way that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Celeste Fran. So, Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes, the only thing that I want to, like, councilperson, friend, talks about six years. So I've been on the council, this is my third year, and every time this came up, it was always talked about, we didn't want to go to two lanes in the lower part of Genesee Street. So six years ago, I don't believe the hospital even came into play. Has anybody looked at the traffic that's going to come through the hospital from that point on? So as far as this goes, if this all works, I agree with her. You can come down, you get bikers and this and that, but it's more important, it's important that we do have bikers come down and come to our restaurants and stuff, but it's also important that we have our people who work and live and travel that road every day and it's not going through huge traffic. So this just came, you want to talk about that it's been going on for six years, this came in front of me 15 minutes before the meeting. So I don't have no problem with it if we do it. I think that we should put this in committee, and I think we should have a meeting, like Council, like Samantha said, with the police, the fire, and talk about it because this is way too quick. It might have been here for six years and it's a great idea, but every time it's came up, there's been a problem with going to two lanes. And six years ago, there wasn't a plan for a hospital here. So that, that argument, I don't buy. So that's just, I'm, I'm for it if we can talk about it and go through everything, but I can't see that area going in two lanes.
Thank you, Councilman Beatrice.
Council, all right, go ahead.
Three lanes, three lanes, not two lanes, three, I think that that matters.
Well, it's three lanes, but one lane is for deliveries. It's two lanes of traffic.
And turning, that's important.
And then you, or you go?
No, he can go.
Mr. President, you have the floor.
I just wanted to make a note about this because we've brought up safety and a couple things. I don't believe that, there's, there's pros and cons, but I don't think our city engineer would allow this to move forward if it was unsafe. This is still three lanes. I don't think, as much as I am not a fan of doing this, I don't see that it would propose, or would pose, this proposal would not necessarily pose an issue to public safety. And I just want to float that out there, even though I don't like this, if the council does this and people are listening right now, because people are, this is not going to pose a risk to public safety. I just wanted to put that out there.
I'll set, Mr. President?
And I would like to see a meeting on this so that people can think about it even as the trial happens. It does look like obviously thought went into this, but, I mean, this is a major change. So I would like to see us at least sit around and hash it out and, you know, possibly garner some input, see what's going on with this. All right? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Aiello, this is your district, and go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And I just keep adding to this because this has been like such a long, extensive conversation. I know I talked about business owners I've spoke with, but aside from that, I've also met with Oneida County Planning Department and state DOT is so excited for this concept and they've been waiting on this as well. And it's to also complement the Route 5S project that's happening, which everybody please vote again for that project tonight and tomorrow, so we might write. And then also the connectivity of what's about to happen with the bridge welcome into Utica and the bike lanes from that. But people bring up good points with the hospital. I understand their concern. From my standpoint, when you make a city that is pedestrian-friendly and pedestrian-first, the safety measures that come with that are just so crucial. And that's because the hospital is actually all the more reason of why I want to see this implemented. We need multiple forms of transportation to be just, yeah, allowed throughout the city. Personally, I get so many bikers who do come to my shop. It's not easy to ride a bike on Genesee Street right now, but for every biker that does, that's a parking spot that's available. So that's an opportunity. And also, with four lanes, it, it makes traffic so much faster. It's not just 30 miles an hour, people fly a little bit more. And from four lanes, our city, our downtown right now is designed to get through it, not to come to it. So as a business owner, I'm not trying to take business away from anybody, which I can see when you reduce lanes, that, that concept can be scary, but I, if people can give this a chance, I, all for all the conversations, it's my favorite topic. We can, I will gladly keep going on this. But thank you for everybody's consideration with this tonight. If you do have more questions, let me know. And I'd be happy to get everybody, even with, obviously, engineering, state, everybody who wants to chime in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Aiello. Councilman DeBranco, you have the floor.
Yeah, again, I just don't think we're going to get the full effect without having better weather, seeing the cyclists coming up and down Genesee. We're not going to accomplish anything in the winter. I really don't feel we're going to accomplish what we want to accomplish in the winter months. If you want to see more activity down there, you want to see cyclists coming in, like I said, maybe spring, maybe summer would be a good time to actually, you know, implement this plan. But I don't see it over the winter. I'm not going to support it if we're going to try to do something over the winter, I could tell you that right now. I feel it'd be better, more hustle and bustle, more people on the street, and let's just see how it works, especially with the cyclists and things of that nature. That's my opinion, so that's that.
Thank you, Councilman DeBranco. Mr. President, one more last thing.
All right. No, it's a quick question for the city engineer. You mentioned about having issues, you know, taking up the lines, et cetera. Is there going to be, like, let's say this goes through for 90 days, you're painting this. If it doesn't work, is there going to be issue reversing it before the winter?
You've got to grind off the lanes.
Okay.
You've got to re-stripe that.
Okay, so that's.
You can, depending on the weather in the winter.
Well, because this is 90-day trial. So 90 days from now, if this trial, if all nine of these, for all we know, we can do the trial, right, even though you want it, maybe no one wants it, in 90 days, is this reversible?
Yeah, it's reversible. There's a cost, just like there'd be a cost if I striped it through four lanes now and then in the spring I grind it off.
I was only asking because you mentioned something about January and having an issue.
Well, this is, you're doing a 90-day trial, so then you'd have to decide whether you wanted to move forward or you liked it or you didn't like it. So.
We can even decide to do another 90-day trial in January, correct?
You can extend it.
Personally, if you're going to do this trial, I would rather see it in the winter, because that's when the deliveries, the traffic, the ingress, the ingress is going to be a problem.
You won't be able to see the striping, you're not going to be able to see the striping.
I wait to get out of the standing lot for five minutes at five o'clock as it is, you know what I mean? So, those are the types of things you'd want to see in the worst case for the trial. So... All right, as long as, as long as it's at the end of the ninety days, decision.
Okay. Councilwoman Al?
I got one last thing.
Okay.
Sorry. No, I forgot what I was going to ask. No, it was kind of, it was very important. Oh, who's going to, who's going to, is DPW going to be able to keep that median wide open?
They'll plow it just a little bit a year now.
Yeah, well, I mean, and then all the snow goes on the sidewalks and so on and so forth, so.
And then we go through with the Bobcat and Joel and the mother.
I mean, now we've got to be on top of it, because we're going to have deliveries in the middle, in the middle lane, so that's, that's all I'm saying, is that they might, especially if deliveries go early and so on and so forth, we also should make Dave Short aware that we can't hinder, you know, you know, vehicles going there to drop off deliveries.
We have a duty to keep the street passable.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, you got one, is that safe?
Yes, thank you.
It's, I think it's important to remind it, it's not a delivery lane, it's a turning and delivery lane. So, of course, they'll plow it, because it will be accommodating traffic.
So, I'll turn if the truck's delivering in the middle of it.
It has to do with how long it is. So, you have, you get past the truck, and then you take a left into that turn.
It gets out, it gets out.
That's why turning is so long.
All right. Council members, first off, I do believe that this is the first Councilwoman KILO's district. She would like to try something. And we don't know if anything works, and we don't know if we like it unless we try it. So, she's taken steps. I do believe we should support her, we should support her in her district. It is for ninety days. If Councilwoman Al feels like it's not working, she'll bring it right back to the table and revert it back immediately. If Councilwoman Al, because she actually works there and is there twenty-four-seven, she, if the people in the round, the businesses don't like it, you know they're going to her coffee shop and go to yell at her. So, guys, colleagues, I do believe we should give her the opportunity to give it a shot. And then after that, let her take the lead in either closing it or continuing. So, I'd like to see if we can put this to the table, is there any more discussion on it?
I would just add that we have the contingency, that it just gets approved from police, fire, and the checklist for the engineering.
And we'll go by the checklist.
Perfect, thanks.
Anything else? Okay. All right, council members, I'd like to get to the local law that was on the table. Is there any discussion on this?
How did this happen?
It's broke.
Do we have another microphone thing anywhere?
Anybody got a rubber band for Samantha, so you can put a rubber band on it?
Rubber band? Yeah, just going to try it out. I'm going to do a ninety-day trial.
Can we get a couple of rubber bands for Samantha?
See if it works out. I'll tell you what, the six-foot microphone would never break here. No, it's perfect, just like that.
All right, we'd like to get organized with the local law colleagues.
We took the science down.
Perfect.
All right. All set, guys? All right, let's get to this local law. It was on the table for seven days. Is there any other discussions? I'd like to bring it to vote tonight. This is the one that brings the council members, allows them to speak at the planning board meetings, cynic and historic. Any questions? Council members coming out of committee of the whole, Mr. DeBrengo, would you like me to finish that, or would you like to take this?
Go ahead.
We have ordinance number two, the sale of nine thirty-two, nine thirty-four Skyler Street. If nobody is set to speak, I hope there's support on it. The next piece of legislation, ordinance for the sale of one thousand five and one thousand nine Park Avenue, that's not too far, Mike, from there. Any questions? Nobody comes to speak, I hope we support it. Ordinance number six, sale of twelve oh one Seymour Avenue. Nobody speaks, hopefully we'll support it. Next piece of legislation, fifteen twenty-five West Street, coming out of committee. Again, same thing, nobody speaks, council would like to support it, we'll move for the sale. Ordinance number ten, eleven twelve Stark Street, same scenario. And the last property for sale, six twenty-three South Street. Again, nobody opposes, my colleague would like to sell it, we'll go from there. Any questions on the sale of the properties coming out of committee? No questions. Okay, we did the local law, we did that. Is there any other discussions for the pre-meeting?
I have a question, too. Where are we at with proposed ordinance number six that we put into committee at the last meeting? This is amending the two-thousand-foot rule? We placed that into committee last night?
Well, we can pull that out, because it passed planning board, is that my correct on that one?
I believe you're waiting to hold a public hearing on it.
Oh, on the planning board?
We're waiting for... Not on planning board, I believe you're just waiting for the public hearing, which is scheduled for November second.
Second, yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so there's a public hearing scheduled for November second. Okay, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to mention briefly, I'm still working on the gas station convenience store legislation, so we're probably going to have to have a committee meeting next council meeting at five to discuss it, because the, I think, what is it, the ninety, the thirty-day, what did we do, ninety days for convenience stores in August? Ninety days, so it expires in the end of November. So, we're on a time constraint for that in order to be compliant with the codes department and the legislation that's passed, so that's going to have to get passed next meeting.
If you have any proposed legislations, please share it with the colleagues, and we'll see if we can...
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still working on it, it's a lengthy piece, but just be prepared for next meeting.
Any other discussions? Okay, we'll close the meeting till our seven o'clock. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Okay, it is October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the City of Utica Common Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aiello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Calasimo Testa, DeBrengo, Galimi, all present.
Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance, follow my moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is the reading of the minutes. The minutes have been posted, you need code three sixty for the previous meeting.
I have a motion.
Does this, wait, the reading of the minutes?
Dispense.
Okay, or dispense. Okay, we've got a second from Burmaster. Any opposed to dispensing of the reading? Okay, the minutes from the previous meeting have been accepted, and they are available online for the public to view. We do have a public hearing this evening. No one signed up to speak, however, the public hearing is for the following properties. Ordinance two, sale of nine thirty-two to nine thirty-four Skyler Street. Ordinance four, sale of one thousand five and one thousand nine Park Avenue. Proposed ordinance six, sale of twelve oh one Seymour Avenue. Proposed ordinance eight, sale of fifteen twenty-five West Street. Proposed ordinance ten, the sale of eleven twelve Stark Street. Proposed ordinance twelve, the sale of six twenty-three South Street. No one has signed up to speak on behalf of those properties, so the public hearing is now closed. From the floor, do we have a motion to remove proposed ordinance two from committee?
Motion, Mr. President?
Yeah, he did sign it. Any opposed? All right, it's out of committee, just give me one second here, and I will read that legislation. No, I'm sorry. It's like elevator music playing or something. It's twenty-two.
Way in the back.
Ah, there it is. Twenty-six or six? Six, ah, two. Okay. Proposed ordinance two, is the ordinance approving the designation of Edgar Avila as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article fifteen of general municipal law for the purpose of the sale of nine thirty-two and nine thirty-four Skyler Street, is for a sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Public hearing was just held, your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Is there a motion to pull ordinance four?
Councilwoman Al sponsored it, you can move it.
Moved. Okay, Burmaster's the second to pull from committee, any opposed? All right, the ordinance approving the designation of Raymond Rizucci is an eligible and qualified project sponsor for the sale of one thousand five and one thousand nine Park Avenue for a sum of two thousand ninety dollars and fifty-four cents from the URA, is on the floor, your vote.
Nineties adopted.
Would someone like to pull proposed ordinance six from committee, twelve oh one Seymour Avenue?
Make a motion.
All right, Venice was the motion on that.
Second.
All right, Second Williamson was the second, any opposed? All right, ordinance number six, is the sale of twelve oh one Seymour Avenue to Carlos Morcetto, two hundred and fifty dollars. Public hearing was just held, your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Is there a motion to pull proposed ordinance number eight? All right, Urban's the motion, Beatrice is the second, any opposed? Proposed ordinance number eight, ordinance approving the designation of Jamie Kido as the eligible and qualified project sponsor for the sale of fifteen twenty-five West Street for a sum of twenty thousand dollars. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Motion to pull proposed ordinance ten, Burmaster, second from DeBrengo, any opposed? Ordinance ten is on the floor, it's an ordinance approving the designation of Pidad Inoa as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article fifteen for the sale of eleven twelve Stark Street for a sum of thirty-one thousand dollars from the URA. To the URA.
Nineties adopted.
Okay, one more, six twenty-three South Street, proposed ordinance twelve.
Councilwoman Al?
Second.
Okay. Any opposed? Ordinance approving the designation of Sinad Zuchik, or no, Zukic, is an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article fifteen, six twenty-three South Street for fifty-seven thousand dollars from the URA. Set. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Good. That concludes the properties that we have the public hearing for, public comment period. We have four people signed up this evening. First is Mark Ford, if you please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, and council members. My name is Mark Ford, I am the president and CEO of Shipwright Services Incorporated, headquarters right here in Utica, New York. I wanted to come up and personally thank you all for reappointing me to the water board. I've enjoyed my tenure there, I've missed maybe two meetings in nine years that I've been on the board, and this is kind of a labor of love for me. I am a U.S. Marine who drank the poison water down in Camp Lejeune, and I wanted to see if I could give back in some way in this, to this community, with my experience in researching water quality and all that stuff, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Rodrigo.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The common council has provided you a copy of Section three two four four Public Comment Period Rule. Please state your name, and you may begin.
My name is Richard Rodrigo, and I would like the common council to pass a resolution in favor of Shenantry Supermarket. Shenantry Supermarket has been here since nineteen twelve, about the same time Oskar Nizo's pizza came. And they've been a very good employer, they've hired a lot of handicapped people, and they were the first modern supermarket in the area. And they've done a lot for the community, and they do have the best meat around. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alyssa Bolt, come forward. Common council has provided you a copy of Section three two four four Public Comment Period Rule. Please state your name, and you may begin.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Bolt, and I'm here today to advocate on behalf of a group of people in the city of Utica who are in a desperate situation that constitutes a humanitarian emergency. At this point in time, there are still several dozen people in our city who remain unsheltered with winter approaching and have nowhere to go other than a much-maligned tent city in the area of Oneida Square. I can't overemphasize enough how desperate the situation is, that there are people who truly have nowhere to go, and that the city has, through their silence, allowed things to get to the point where people are going to die this winter if nothing happens. Many solutions have been proposed for how to house these people, and at this point, honestly, I don't think we care anymore what solution the council ends up coming up with, as long as there is some form of solution, as long as there is some way that these people have a roof over their heads over the coming winter. I urge the city to take this issue with the utmost seriousness and prioritize the dignity and value of human life and the safety of our fellow Americans over other concerns that compete with it, and show that we really are and can be the greatest city in America by doing something that no other city has been willing to do, and house all of its people without conditions, without exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Rubitsky. The common council has provided you a copy of Section three two four four Public Comment Period Rule, please state your name, and you may begin.
Stefan Rubitsky.
Thank you.
And over the weekend, on Saturday morning, the founder of Hoops and Dreams and a leader within the city of Utica passed away, Patrick Johnson, and he should be remembered, and let's have a moment of silence for Mr. Patrick Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment. We have no guests this evening. We do not have communications from the mayor, we do have a cash report.
Utica Cash Report for September two thousand and twenty-two totals eighty-eight point eight two two million received and filed.
Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals, first district, Councilmember KILO.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody who spoke tonight, especially Alyssa. I know we are talking a lot in my district of the tent city that is happening, and people who are experiencing homelessness, and one thing I, you know, I talk with a lot of people on both sides of it, because there are these sides to this conversation, and one thing I've noticed that everybody agrees on is nobody wants what's happening to happen. And that's where I think if we can focus on that, hopefully we can get solutions for people sooner. I personally, you know, I've been approached with certain ideas about the tent cities, and I don't think the answer comes from banning tents, we need to put our energies and focus into the actual solutions for people, and that's what's going to correct it. And a lot of this is, we're waiting to hear from the county, I know that they had two RFPs that recently closed. One is for a homeless shelter, one is for the low-barrier shelter, because that part is super important. So, hopefully we hear more from that immediately, because Code Blue season is upon us. So, other than that, I know a lot of the conversation earlier in the meeting was talking about complete streets, so I just want to emphasize, if anybody has any questions at home listening or wherever, please reach out, I will gladly keep talking about this. And again, this conversation of complete streets proposal is for ninety days, and that's to, the more we prioritize our pedestrians and the safety of our pedestrians, that's the accessibility and a more family-friendly city for everyone. So, I appreciate everybody's support with that, and look forward to the conversations that come from it. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Second district, Councilmember Robert Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to give a shout-out to the fire department. My dad fell a couple weeks ago, broke his back, broke his hip. The fire department came, they were phenomenal, they got him out of the house, they did, they did a great job, and I just want to reach out to the fire department and our family's appreciation, and I want to thank you. That's all I have at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Third district, Councilmember Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo Stefan's comments. Utica really lost someone very important this, these past several days. Patrick Johnson was a real force in this community for trying to make it better. I think that I'm going to move forward trying to keep in my mind to try to listen to people as well as Patrick listened to people. I sometimes am a better talker than I am a listener, and he was a really deep listener, and I really appreciated that about him. I think we, as a community, are worse off without him, and I'm sure that moving forward, we will all together find ways to carry on with his good work and remember him and honor him as we move forward. And my deepest condolences to everybody who knew Patrick and who grieves his loss to his family and his close friends, et cetera, my deepest condolences to all of you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. District four, Majority Leader and Councilman Frank Miola.
Mr. President, if my colleagues don't mind, I'd like a moment of silence for a prayer for my colleague's father, for his speedy recovery. Thank you very much. To address the speaker, there are two places where homeless can go in the city of Utica. Utica Rescue Mission, telephone number, area code three one five seven three five one six four five. Second place is MB Housing, delocated on Genesee Street, telephone number, area code three one five seven one six zero one one four. If you don't find housing there, please contact the county, there are additional housing places available throughout the city. We don't want anybody in the cold, especially during our wintertime. Next thing, on a better note and a lighter note, Halloween time, guys, coming, and candy, and a lot, a lot of... Candy and a lot, a lot of crazy trick-or-treaters. So make sure we're all ready for them. Make sure everybody dresses up and gets ready at the door because hopefully, there'll be a lot of them coming out this year. And I'm pretty sure that the mayor's going to have an announcement for safety. And make sure that they all get home safe and have some fun for trick-or-treating. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Third District, Madison Earp at the floor.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what Councilman Friend said about Patrick Johnson. I actually grew up with him on a hiring place in Utica, and I was a little older than him, but he's always been a person that went out there and made friends and talked to a lot of people, so he's going to be missed. Secondly, I'd like to thank the city of Utica for the great job they've been doing with the streets and the police department. I went to North Carolina and got back Monday, and unfortunately, they were shooting a lot of police outside of my house. And I was hoping nobody had broken, but there was just a little bit of shooting going on. But the more we talk to these kids, I think the gun violence is down. But every now and then, we do get some knuckleheads that's doing stuff. So I thank the police department, Engineer Department, and RNDPW and everybody that did so much work over the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixth District, Councilman Joe Peters, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President. The only thing I want to say is, I know in the paper and in the news, and I've been talking to Chief Noonan about car thefts. Just anybody who's listening out there, please just lock your doors. And second thing, more than anything, do not leave your key fob in your car. We're finding that's happening a lot. And they're not going through breaking stuff. They're hitting car doors, and if the door's locked, they move on to the next place. But please, help our police. And if you are lucky enough that the police do catch the person who vandalized your car or stole your car, please cooperate with the police, you know, and, you know, move forward on, you know, pressing charges or doing whatever you have to do. That will deter a lot. So, thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Minority Leader and Council Large, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass.
Thank you. Council Large, Samantha Colasmo Testa, you have it.
Thank you. Last week was Fire Prevention Week. They celebrated their 100th anniversary. Fire won't wait, police plan your escape. I know that the Utica Fire Department was at Watson Williams Elementary today. They did a wonderful job, so I want to thank them for coming there. And, you know, it was nice to have an assembly back at school for the first time in, I think, three years for fire prevention. They also came yesterday and helped man the Oneida County Smokehouse. They came and set it up, so that was nice for the kids to be able to see. You know, in talking with our fire department, I know that they have been tasked with, you know, not only dealing through, you know, dealing with a pandemic and working through a pandemic with, you know, not having the proper PPE gear and so on and so forth, but they've now been without a contract for five years now, close to it. Oh, three years, I should say. The city has no intent to settle anytime soon. And unfortunately, the men and women that have put their life on the line continuously, even with $62 million or $64 million in ARPA funding coming that was supposed to be allocated for some of the, towards first responders, they have yet to have their firehouse completed on Whitesboro Street. And they said that they didn't have materials, but I don't know how you award a contract to somebody that doesn't have the materials to finish that. So, you know, it continues to be a hit on the morale to the department without a contract and working in the conditions that they have, especially at the Whitesboro Street Firehouse. It's pretty disgusting. Also, I just have a quick question for Chief Fingers. Have we heard anything on the safer grant?
No, there's been no grants awarded since shortly before the hurricane hit Florida. We've been told that a lot of female personnel have deployed to Florida.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, hopefully, we hear something sometime soon. How is emergency callbacks been for the firefighters? Has that, have you seen an increase in that since we've, since the council cut the four or five members of the, of the department to the fire line?
There's a general increase over time right now anyways. Again, we've talked about this in the past with the launch of 207As, 450 to 470 open shifts before we even start. They account for around 24-hour shifts that we have to backfill. We just recently settled a 207A case, or New York State settled a 207A case, nine years, three months it took to get on board.
Right, right.
At this, at this time?
Sure, that was my last question.
No, I was going to say, any further input? We should reserve questions for the department heads during that order.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for letting me go on a board. The last thing is, our committee meetings. I, it's very difficult for me, knowing that I was on the council for eight years, and the committee structure that we had was vital to the way that the council moved forward with legislation. In the past nine months, 10 months that I've been on the council, our committee system has basically become obsolete. We're asked to pass legislation that really should have more thought and time behind it. I literally spent two years, you'll see a complete street legislation coming up. I spent two years putting that legislation together. I had people from the state come in. I had people from the city come in. I mean, and we structured that. It's not an earth-shattering piece of legislation, but it did take a lot of time to put together. And when I get pieces of legislation, like doing a 90-day trial and so on and so forth, it's bothersome to me that we knew that we were reconstructing or repaving a road and didn't look at what we could do with the complete street policy before the road was paved or while the road was paved, before we strip it, so on and so forth. So I, and I'll just, I'll talk about it more when we get to that legislation, but I really think that the focus for any legislation that needs to come in literally needs to be vetted in the committee process. We received a local law last week. We had minimal discussion on it. We're going to be asked to vote on that tonight. There's been several pieces of legislation that have happened in the past that we have been asked to, you know, vote on without barely any discussion. So I kind of just want to bring it to everyone's attention now that, you know, this isn't going to fly for much longer because there's going to be consequences to passing legislation without no, without at least having a discussion with the proper department heads in regards to some of the legislation, some of the pieces of legislation that we have, that we pass. So I kind of just wanted to bring that, you know, back up, that maybe we can get back to having a committee system that was actually, you know, worth it. Because I could tell you, I used to go to, God, 20 meetings a month sometimes. I mean, I know that sounds a bit excessive, but, I mean, we used to have to report findings to the state on how many meetings that we used to attend. And I could tell you that I, it wasn't close to the work that we used to do compared to what we have now. So, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. President Protet, Council Large, Frank Bragley at the floor.
Yeah, I just want to respond to Councilperson Colasimo. I mean, last meeting, I reiterated, go ahead, call the meeting. You have full authority to call a committee meeting. You didn't do it. So, wait a minute. You didn't do it. So, let me just say one thing. I gave you full authority to call a meeting.
Bragley has the floor. Thank you.
And you didn't do it. So don't blame all the members of this council or blame myself. I am in charge of the committee, the whole. I see what's in committee. We have, after, it was unnecessary to me today. There wasn't much in committee other than the sales, and I knew we didn't have much legislation today. So after we had our 6:00 PM pre-conference meeting, we had enough time to discuss what was in committee. Councilperson Ayala brought it out. Would you like to discuss what's in committee? And nobody wanted to discuss what's in committee. So I think it's just a waste of time. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to set up a meeting. Next, next meeting at 5:00 PM, clerk, take note. And we'll discuss whatever's in committee, and hopefully, we can come up with some answers on why some of these items are sitting in there for months. So, but we do bring it up every meeting, and we don't have a discussion on it. So, that's that. Now, the other thing is, I just want to express my condolences to the Patrick Johnson family. I mean, I met Patrick years and years ago. I was in the fire department, and I attended one of his seminars on racism. And, and, you know, it really brought to light some of the things that I didn't realize at times. And I think the gentleman, throughout the years, when you see him and he smiles, he had that infectious smile. He had that demeanor about him. He always cared for people. He cared for his community. And I'll tell you, he's going to be dearly missed throughout the community. I know he worked well with law enforcement and other city officials. The gentleman, he was a true gentleman every time I had conversations with him. And he will be dearly missed. We are going to, I know I'm working on a piece with Councilperson Urban as far as a proclamation, so we'll be coming out with that next meeting, and just in his honor. So I just want to, you know, just remember him as the person he was and what he meant to the community of Corn Hill and what he did for them and tried to build that bridge, you know, between each other. And he tried, he tried to help every individual that came his way, whether they were in trouble, whether they're good, bad, whatever. It didn't matter. He tried to lead them in the right direction, and you can't thank him enough for that. The guy was 24/7. He was on top of everything that went on in his neighborhood. So rest in peace, Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to actually speak about something today. It's not necessarily to do with this street legislation that was proposed, although I would like to see this in committee, so that we can talk about it. I'm looking at this right now and trying to think of everything I think of about this exact proposal. I haven't seen it, you know, yes, it was in the, it was in the air, right? And again, I said, I think it was Mayor Raffaro who first proposed doing this, having a meeting and changing things. This has been many, many years, much more than six years, that people in Utica have been talking about doing something like this with Genesee Street. But that's not the reason I'm speaking right now. The reason I'm speaking is legislation, and Councilwoman Colasmo Testa touched on some of this. It's not just the committee system. We had a different process prior. We had a process in which legislation was driven through a committee system, not just so it could be reviewed by a committee. It was so that it would be actually vetted and we could actually have an agenda. The council could be prepared for what comes up at a meeting, and the people could be prepared for what comes up at a meeting. When we attempted to route things around the committee system, it was a big deal because someone had to actually do that on the floor by way of majority vote. And not just waive the Thursday rule, but waive the entire rules of order, the legislative process to which the judge would review that prior to something hitting the floor, the legislative process which things would be placed in front of the public. Like I said, I'm thinking about so many different things right now. But for many years, I was able to put an article in the paper from the council president's desk, not Mike Gallini, from the council president's desk, documenting the process that this council followed in between each meeting, stating to the public what could happen at a meeting, what might come up at a meeting, what was placed in committee, if there were outcomes of committee meetings. But the process of the legislation was that it was submitted prior to all the council members, and it was only the exception that it wouldn't. And of late, we do get into a mode of doing everything on the night of. Even if we do have that committee meeting, great, that's great. But then comments and questions and things come up, and then once you talk about something, we go through the committee meeting, and we try to vote on it, or we have to. It's very contentious because people want to move things. People want to see things happen, but we haven't actually processed what's going on. And unfortunately, from the council president's desk, the rules have changed. The process has changed. Even our code of ordinances have changed to which what the council president can do to organize this council. Unfortunately, I'm kicking myself for saying this publicly. I've wanted to say this publicly for years now. But unfortunately, I also had to deal with through 2016, 2017, 2018, people consistently and constantly saying, listen, if you continue to organize this council within the ordinances that you're allowed to do it under, we're going to figure out how to either get rid of the council president or take away the ability for this council to be organized. And what bothers me is this isn't personal. This isn't about me or you. It's about the process, the way we deal with things, and being prepared. I unfortunately just had to have a conversation with somebody. Said, how did this get on the agenda? Why didn't we know? I said, well, it was just brought forward. That happened before. You proposed multiple local laws before on the floor. But that was the exception. And it's just frustrating because this is a big change, and this is something that we should be talking about. And the reason I'm talking about this right now is because over the past six months, I've seen two different things happen, okay? I've seen a Stewart's proposal very publicly discussed for two months. Lots of, lots of meetings, lots of input was gathered. I saw skate parks discussed over and over again, publicly, multiple meetings, bringing people to the table. I know for a fact that there are multiple businesses and property owners that this was not truly discussed with. And why, why isn't everything getting this? It's not because certain people aren't following things or doing what they should do or should not do. It's because we don't have process anymore. So I'm, this is my appeal. This is my remonstrances and appeal to the council. Maybe you don't go back to the committee system we had prior. Maybe you don't go back to actually submitting legislation to a committee of the whole beforehand, but change the process so we're not doing everything on the night of. Because this is stressful. This is insane. I'm going to take 1,000 calls tomorrow, but there's so many, so is everyone else in this room, including the paper, right? And this just got dropped on us at 5:59. It's unacceptable. Moving on. We have Proposed Resolution Number One, Pointing Mark Ford to the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Water Board. Would someone like to move?
I'd like to see this, please.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this has a "y" on it. Do we have to wait Thursday or so?
I believe we should. Let's just wait for the...
Can I make a motion?
Yes. Thank you. Any opposed? All right, the Thursday rule has been waived. Are you, let me clarify. Was that for the evening?
Or the whole meeting?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Please note that. Okay. This was full council?
This was full council.
Thank you.
Yes.
This is a resolution appointing a candidate to the Oneida County Board of Legislators for appointment to the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Water Board. Be resolved pursuant to Section 1226-E of the Public Authorities Law of the State of New York. In the agreement between the City of Utica Common Council and the Council of Oneida Board of Legislators, the Council hereby nominates the following individual as a candidate for appointment to the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Water Board by the Oneida County Board of Legislators, Mark Ford, for a three-year term, to expire December 31, 2025. Be it further resolved, the City of Utica is hereby directed to transmit the name of the council nominee to the clerk of the county legislature to retain a record specifying the date of delivery thereof. Your vote. Thank you.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you, Judge. Proposed ordinance number two. Would someone like to move this? Councilperson Friend, second from Ayala. This is a Board of Estiment and Aportionment 2022-2023 Fiscal Year Ordinance. The explanation of this transfer is to adjust accounts to reflect continued increase in gas and oil. It's a sum of $115,000 going to a mix of accounts, police administration, fire mechanic, and parks maintenance, all gas and oil. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Proposed ordinance three, intersections where stops required. This is sponsored by Councilmember Ayala. Would you like to move this as well? Second? Councilperson Friend? Tell me. Intersections where stops required. Be it ordained that Section 216-358 Schedule C, intersections where stops required of the Utica City Code be amended to include the following. Alden Street, Mason Street, Southeast Corner, to control northbound traffic on Mason Street. Be it further ordained with proper signage... Street. Be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected where necessary. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance four is also moved by council member Ilo, sponsored by, is there a second? Second from Friend. Be it ordained that section 216-356 Schedule A, one-way streets of the Utica City Code be amended to include the following. Mason Street, northbound from South Street to Albany Street. Be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected where necessary. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
The next piece of proposed resolution number five. This is sponsored by council members Friend, Ilo, and Miola. So we need to move, Ilo's going to move this, second from Miola. This is a resolution requesting a 90-day trial of the complete streets policy to be implemented on Genesee Street from Mariskney Street to Cottage Place. Be resolved in accordance with the complete streets policy adopted on August 17, 2016. The common council of the City of Utica does hereby request a 90-day trial of the complete streets policy to be implemented on Genesee Street from Mariskney Street to Cottage Place. Be it further resolved that the proper signage be erected where necessary.
Can you, can you get a roll call on the vote, please?
A roll call?
To pull it out of committee to the floor. You had a motion and a second.
Standing committee.
It's being moved.
To where?
Standing committee. It's being proposed on the floor.
Okay. Can you take a vote on that?
Well, no.
No. You made a motion and a second. In order for it to be brought to the floor, you have to hit five votes in support of it.
All right. Let's just, do not request the floor again. I'm going to explain exactly what's going on right now. Okay? Someone moved and introduced a piece of legislation. It's seconded. Our new rules specify that all legislation that is new is to be reviewed in the pre-meeting conference, but it is to be introduced on the floor. Those are the rules we've been operating on. It was introduced. It was moved by Ilo, seconded by Miola. It is now either on the floor for any preceding motions to commit, et cetera, or it could be moved to a vote, which if no one commits this, it's going to be brought to a vote.
I'd like to make the motion to commit. Put it on committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, put it on the board. Your votes on the motion to commit. This is a vote to commit. So yes, committee, no, stays on the floor for a vote. On the floor for a vote. All right. I've read the legislation. It's on the floor. So if there's no further debate or discussion, please cast your vote on this legislation.
I just have a couple, couple of questions. And I guess the police and the fire department are here now. One of the motions that I had asked for earlier that it would be contingent, that it goes through the police and fire department, Chief Noonan and Chief Fingersaw, have you guys had the chance to look over this design? Okay. Did you see it as well?
Just, just talking.
Okay. Do you have any comments in regards to fire apparatuses, emergency vehicles, traffic congestion, so on and so forth? Also, I would imagine that there also has to be signage put up to let everybody know that they were not, there'll now be delivery lanes inside there as well.
Well, just as a point of order from the chair, it does technically say in the resolution that proper signage would be erected. However, I would agree in also regarding the fact that you brought up the OPD, I mean, they have to do traffic studies for much less changes than this.
Right. Well, and that too. I mean, and also if you're putting up a loading sign, it has to be legislated through the body before it can be put up.
Listen, I already said my piece on this. I want to see this go to committee, but...
I just don't know how, I guess...
Here's what I want to state, though. This is a resolution to do a trial. So I'm just, just to follow the order to do that.
I mean, I guess, I, I get it. I guess my, my point is that I'm trying to make that, I'm trying to make sure that, listen, it's getting striped this weekend.
Right.
So it's not like anybody has that much time from Thursday, Friday, and Saturday to really get through the process and understand the changes that are going there. And if you're, you're putting this up, I think that the emergency response vehicles that respond up and down Genesee Street and to these businesses really need to be taken into consideration before somebody gets hurt. I mean, and this is the point of why there's a checklist and why there's these things put in place that, that are supposed to be done. So I, I guess, I mean, as the chief of the fire department, would you feel comfortable within two days moving Genesee Street without any advertisement to the public that is going from three to two lanes? I mean, and I guess that's, that's the, the concern that I have and what needs to be addressed by this body before they just implement a 90-day thing changing an entire traffic pattern down one of the busiest streets in the city of Utica.
I have to move to a different council person. Are you okay at this point?
I'm aggravated. It's, it's very agitating.
Councilperson Ilo, well, I heard...
I'd like to qualify as well.
Well, we can either qualify if there's more discussion. This is technically an open debate still.
Only qualify. We're not into discussion, Mr. President. We can't ask questions to what he calls on the floor. We're here just to qualify or vote before the vote. If you want to open it for discussion...
No, that's, that's my point. There was things stated, and I believe this is, I'm going to share a debate back and forth here before this vote. Councilperson Ilo, did you want the floor?
Yes, please. Thank you. Yeah, we're talking about a lot of important things tonight, and it's not, it's probably the first that it's been in this council room since, well, 2016, when complete streets was implemented. But you want to talk about safety and before somebody gets hurt. Four lanes of traffic exceeding 30 miles per hour and the speed that happens there and the safety implications that happen in downtown Utica. That, that's, I just want to emphasize again that that's why I'm so in favor of complete streets. We want to talk about accessibility. We have RCIL downtown, CABV for the blind association downtown, the, all the people in the elderly apartments around us, kids, the list goes on. And I understand the concerns of people feeling that they're just hearing about this today and they want to talk it out more. You weren't in the room with me when it came to like state DOT and even talking and getting input from county planning and just locally here in our own city. That said, this is just a resolution asking the mayor to do what he could do on his own, even with a 90-day trial of making this happen. And my other thing is, the, the streets are getting paved on Saturday. So we could pave them, or striped, thank you. They're getting striped Saturday, no matter what. We can stripe them with the four lanes of chaos that it is now and then eventually do this, which is even more money to put it down for a trial. What if we don't want this? I'm being true to my word here of this could be a trial and we don't actually implement it. But that's even more money. So that's why I want to push it forward today of when I heard that it was actually getting striped this Saturday. It just seemed like the best use of taxpayer dollars to start the trial now. If we're going to paint it, stripe it once, do it now. So again, yeah, thank you for everybody with your support who is interested. And if anybody has more questions, I'm here for it.
Councilwoman DeBrago?
Yeah. All right. I, I don't mind having a study, but I think she, she makes a great point as far as today's Wednesday, they're going to stripe it on Saturday, Sunday. It's supposed to be in the seventies, and then we're going to start. Many people live outside the city of Utica that do business in the city of Utica, so they're going to be coming through here really not knowing properly what's going to take place. I mean, we have to have a media blitz, you know, maybe put it on the program, the City of Utica program, maybe put it on our website. This is, this is going to take a little time for people to say, okay, when I enter the city now, the downtown district, you know, there's going to be some changes here. I'm going to see a truck in the middle of the road, you know? There's, I think we need a little bit more time. Maybe we can amend it to put, allow 30 days for advertisement or, or notify the public, maybe even two weeks, whatever it may be. But I don't think we should just rush it and start it right away. Because once you mark the roads, people are going to get confused. So that's my opinion on it. Maybe we could put it, you know, a timeframe where they could at least let the public know what's taking place and effective on a certain day, this is going to happen. And, you know, and it may not cause accidents. And at least the public is informed that we did our due diligence to let them know that we just didn't spring this on anybody because I think it's going to be mayhem for the first week or so because people aren't going to, they're going to see lines in the road and they're not going to know what's going on. That's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Beatrice?
Yes. So I keep hearing about all these meetings...
Actually, hold on just one second because I just need to pull, this is actually like a Robert's Rules thing. Is anyone else going to be requesting to speak for this, kind of in favor of what's going on?
I want to speak.
I, I just got one thing. But I keep hearing about all these meetings with the state DOT. We have the two most important people in our city sitting right here. We have the police chief, the fire chief. They just seen, they just seen this tonight. Weren't they privy to these meetings? Okay? So I, I don't know how, after you hear the police chief and the fire chief say they just seen this tonight, how anybody with good conscience could pass this without putting it in committee. Thank you.
Councilperson Friend?
Yeah. I, I think we have to give each other enough credit to think that we can disagree and be genuinely good people without accusing each other of not having conscience, which is what you said. No one with a good conscience cannot put this in committee, and I object to that.
All right. That's fine.
Mr. President?
On that.
Thank you. I just, a couple of things. So we keep talking about this discussion happening since 2016. Again, if you specifically read the legislation that was passed in 2016, okay, it specifically states that anytime a road is being rebuilt, repaved, so on and so forth, that the checklist needs to be completed before anything is passed through the complete streets policy. Now, with that said, I just want to touch base for the checklist number one. And this is, and I never wanted this complete streets policy to be a, to be a disaster area because it's not what it's meant to be. It's meant to be so that it's, it's able to have connectivity. It's meant so that people are able to, you know, access roads in ways that normally they can't. And it doesn't necessarily mean that a complete street has to have a bike lane in each of those, in each of the streets that's, that is completed. So for example, like this, this checklist is very, very thorough, right? So I want to give you an example for this road, this road in particular. It says our existing transit routes, facilities, bus stops, shelters, pullouts, in inconvenient locations or some, something along those lines. So you're supposed to consult with traffic and safety, who, who are those people? So you're, you're even talking about buses go down Genesee Street. I mean, there, this isn't just something that I put together overnight. Literally, it took two years to implement. And I can't, and if, if I'm advising you, somebody that drafted the complete streets legislation, that this is something that needs to be discussed further, okay? After, after what hard work and energy that I put into this legislation, not wanting it to be a disaster area, because I do want to see if there's maybe a possibility that a bike lane or something or so forth could go on Genesee Street and connect to, and, and as I got thinking about it, it's just, there's not, there's not, this checklist cannot be completed in three days. I could tell you that for a thousand and 10% fact. Okay? And, and Katie, maybe you think that this is, this is something against you, maybe you don't. But this is something that we as a body pass, that, that we're going to see the ramifications for not going through it and dealing with police, fire, Dave Short. It's just, I, I don't want to see if something, if this idea is, is actually a good idea, be failed because the, the process wasn't followed the way it was supposed to. So as somebody that passed this, that, that worked hard and passed this legislation back in 2016, I would hope that you, you could take that into consideration before passing this because it's not, it's not going to be something that, that, that can be conducive in three days worth of work, especially when it took two years to complete the legislation to, for it to even be ready to be passed by the, by the body. So I, I mean, I don't know what else to say other than...
Okay. I'm going to take the floor back, but thank you for the comments. At this time, I'm going to bring it to a vote. No, oh, bring it, I meant, I meant call for, yeah. They did bring it.
Five yeas adopted.
That is the end of the regular package, but we need to, if there's any other business?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to remove the local law.
Motion to take from the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to take from the table, local law number, is that a number?
There isn't a number for local law.
Well, it's introductory to local law. There is a number. I'm looking for my, it's introductory to local law number five. Yeah.
Oops, my mic was not on. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table local law number five.
Second? Miola, second. All right. This is laid on the table for more than seven days at this time. This local law is on the floor for a vote. I will read it into the record as it is said on the table. Be it enacted by the common council of the City of Utica, New York. Section 3.007B is hereby amended to add paragraph 45, which shall read as follows. Section 3.007B 45, B 45, members of the common council shall have the right to speak at any meeting of the planning board and/or the scenic and historic commission on proposals in their district. The council member shall be allotted time to be determined by the members of the planning board and scenic and historic commission. The council member speaking does not represent the views of the common council, nor will the council member attempt to engage in debate with the members of the planning board or scenic and historic commission. Nothing herein shall be implied to affect the responsibility of the planning board or scenic and historic commission and its powers to solely determine the matter before them in the manner provided by law, which I just found yet another little typo. It's, it's in material. It's just...
Does it change the intent of the legislation?
I believe it's before them. Is that correct?
Where are you?
Should that read before them, matter before them, last sentence?
It doesn't change the intent of the legislation.
It doesn't. No, it's just, it's one letter.
Because you're right, it should be there.
It's fine. I'm just noting that when this goes to, you know, the effect of the, this local law shall take effect upon filing in off, in the office of the New York State Secretary of State or as otherwise provided by law. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else this evening? Anything else?
Make a motion.
Yeah, I can't make a motion.
Make a motion to head up.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. No. Thank you.